I'll call to order the work session for Wednesday, April 3rd, 2019. Before we start, I'd like to say congratulations to Councilman Sidnor on his retirement.
From work.
From work, yeah, not from. Congratulations, sir.
Congratulations, Keith.
So we'll make Ms. Rau aware that you'll also be in City Hall every day.
We can make it happen.
That's not true.
Okay. Agenda item A is ordinance number 1940, an ordinance of the Marion City Council of Laurel, Maryland, to concur with the City of Laurel Planning Commission for the revised conceptual site plan for the Westside Mixed-Use Development. The property is Zoned MXT and is located off Westside Boulevard and Vandusen Road, Laurel, Maryland, 2000, rather, 20707. Good luck.
Good evening, Mayor, Mr. President, Members of Council. As was stated, this is a revision of the conceptual site plan for the Westside project. The applicant is seeking the, to reduce the retail area to 40,000 square feet maximum and include an additional 81 townhomes on the site. The property was previously approved for 200,000 square feet of commercial. The current applicant, application is revising 16.9 acres of the Westside project, 9.4 acres proposed for the new townhomes and then 7.5 acres for the commercial use. In January 2013 and April 2013, it was split up. There were two conceptual plans were approved by, via ordinance by the council. The applicant will be required to obtain subdivision and final site landscape plans approvals for the project through the planning commission moving forward. The applicant did conduct an updated traffic impact analysis, which is show, which you've received a copy of, and it did show a reduction in trips generated. The applicant also held two meetings with the current Westside residents at the site to discuss the changes. The applicant is here along with their attorney to also answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Love. Let's start with questions or comments from Councilman DeWolff.
Good evening, everybody. I was just wondering if you guys happened to find any healthy restaurants to put in those, those areas out there now that you got, you're going to have the Farm Store out there and what's the other one, Wawa? Any healthy ones coming in? Not yet? Okay.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Edward Gibbs, an attorney with office in Largo, representing Strip Matter Land, the owner and developer. And the Strip Matters have engaged roadside development to be the commercial developer. They have conducted exhaustive outreach relative to many different commercial users. They do have some restaurant users on their palate who they've been in contact with and who they believe are very productive as potential tenants, but they have not signed any leases with them yet.
Because the big food stores are out.
They, they are out.
I was hearing, now this is just rumors of food shoppers, which probably a lot of those people are going to go down to the food shoppers and I was hearing there's some sort of nationwide thing with food shoppers that they might be closing some stores. I can't see them closing the Laurel store because it's so productive and plus after your development gets in, it's gonna, it's gonna be booming because that's gonna be probably the closest one there. So I hope that maybe you, you reached out to them to say, hey, listen, there's a lot of people coming into this area that's probably going to be using you because you can't find those big food stores anymore.
Well, I, I know that I have not personally talked with anyone at Shoppers. I do know they have closed some stores and, but I don't think the one in Laurel is, is among those.
Yeah, it's very productive, that store.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. So we're, we're quite a ways at this point from getting to a detailed site plan. You know, we've got to get through this process, then we'd have to do a preliminary subdivision plan and come back. We'll certainly stay in touch with everyone through every, every step process.
Thank you very much.
If we have further information about any particular tenant, let everybody know.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. Councilman Sidnor, any questions for staff or the applicant?
Yes, I got a, well, probably a statement. This is a proper question asked in this format though, but I was just wondering, you said it's going to be reducing retail space to a maximum 40,000 square feet to make an additional 81 townhouses. We always talk about our county being one of the highest county and state for rent and owning homes anyway. Anyway, those, any one of those 81 townhouses can be reduced for affordable housing?
I mean, currently through our affordable housing only affects apartments right now. We don't have anything right now in line for the townhouses.
I think.
Thank you, Councilman Sidnor. That's woman Nicholas.
Carl asked along the lines of what I was going to ask, but are there any vegan restaurants? I've been asked about vegan restaurants in the area. Are there any consideration for those?
The net that roadside development has tossed into the sea is so wide. They're, they're very, very highly experienced retail developers. They've done projects everywhere that are very successful. They are tapping all of their contacts.
Okay.
And actually, you know, we, we had two different outreach meetings out at the apartments, the, at the center that we have for the apartments out there at Westside, and we had huge attendance for both meetings. And, and we have actually had all of the people who came, who were willing to give us their email contact, send suggestions and requests to roadside, and each of those has been followed up with contacts to the restaurants that have been suggested and also from roadside back to the end. So we're working really hard, but we just don't have anything signed at this point in time in terms of restaurant.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Liz.
I'm fine with this, Mr. President.
I'm generally fine with this as well. In fact, I am fine with this. I just have a couple of questions regarding the traffic data.
Yes, Mr. President.
And the, and the reduction that is cited in, in the document as it relates to the difference between the retail side of it, what was initially planned or proposed as trips per day with the retail component that was initially proposed and now what is proposed with the 81 homes and that reduction. I don't know, it just seems to me that there's more in and out traffic on a residential side than, than retail. Can you just give me just a?
Well, well, here's what I can say, Mr. President. The, first of all, we went through our adequate transportation facilities test initially for 500 multifamily unit and 80 townhome plus 200,000 square feet of commercial retail use. We didn't build, I think it was 472 of the multifamily, so pardon me, four, okay, 484. So there were surplus residential trips there that are not used. And then for the townhomes, there were 80 approved and we only built 56. So we had surplus units there. So when you, when you deduct those trips that were already assumed to be on the road from that, from the 80-plus new townhouses, you're, you're already lowering the number of new, new units that are going to put new trips on the road. The retail is substantially reduced, obviously, from 200 down to 40. And, and while retail does not have the same AM peak for trips because a lot of the retail users aren't open, some of them are. So when, when the transportation engineer plugged in these new numbers into the Institute of Transportation Engineers guidelines for generating peak hour traffic, it comes out as a substantial reduction in AM and PM peak hour trips, more so PM than AM though, but still a reduction for AM. And so I, you know, I'm, I'm not a transportation engineer. We'll bring him to the next hearing for you, but, but he feels very comfortable that the trips are going to be reduced as opposed to.
Yeah, and I'm not, not doubting that. I just wanted to just kind of raise that. And I'll just, just add to what my colleagues have said. I know it's very early in the process when it comes to deciding the retail uses that are, that are going to go in. But, you know, specialty dining would be very nice. I'll just add that little piece and I understand where you are early in the process, but.
We, we have heard that message loud and clear. We want that and the residents out there in Westside want it. And, and listen, you know, my clients and I so very sincerely appreciate all the support the city's given us throughout this entire project. We've been working together for many years on this and it's been a grand success thus far and, you know, we, we want nothing more than to have it be something everyone continues to be proud. So we, we will work with you and bring every piece of information that we have to you as we go through the process, whether it's during the CSP process or afterwards in terms of retail users that we can get under.
Well, I can certainly say, Mr. Gibbs, that just speaking for me, working with you and your client through this process from, from my council seat here has, has been a real pleasure.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. We feel the same way. Thank you.
Now, that might change at the planning commission.
I understand.
Thank you. Council will be ready to introduce this at the first public hearing on the Marion City Council on the 8th, April 8th. Okay? Thank you. Item B is ordinance number 1941, text amendment number 251, an ordinance to amend Chapter 20, land development and subdivision, Article 1, zoning, Division 1, definitions, Section 20 dash 1 dot 7, and Division 5, zoning districts, Section 20 dash 6 dot 1 3 of the City of Laurel, Unified Land Development Code and providing an effective date.
Good evening, Mr. President, Mayor, members of the council. The proposed text amendment for ordinance number 1941 would amend Chapter 20, Division 1, definitions, Section 20 dash 1.7, and Division 5, zoning districts, Sections 20 dash 6.13 and Section 6.23 of the city's zoning code to permit health campus within the R5, R55 and RMD zoning districts, which are all one family detached. Currently, the code does not allow health campuses to be constructed in the city. The amendment would permit the structure, the structures in the zones just mentioned. Moreover, in order to construct the health campus, a detailed site and landscape plan to include all structures and uses upon the proposed property shall be approved by the planning commission and comply with the various zoning regulations listed in the proposed ordinance, which include at least 20% of the health campus on the property shall be maintained for green space. Each building constructed upon the health campus shall have a front, side, and rear yard setback of at least 25 feet and at least 35 feet from any yard above in a residentially zoned property. Lot coverage cannot exceed 40% and a subject property of the health campus shall contain a minimum of 20 contiguous acres. That concludes the summation of the text amendment, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Bulleye. Mayor?
I just want to make a comment because the, the things the past several months I've talked about. This mirrors what Prince George County has. Hospital. Something in place. Inexplanation there. There. With the health.
I'm in complete agreement with you, Mayor. Council, any comments or questions, starting with Councilwoman Nicholas?
No questions.
Councilman Sidnor?
No question, Mr. President.
Councilman DeWolff?
None.
And Councilman Liz?
I'm fine with this, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Bulleye.
Thank you.
Agenda item C is ordinance number 1942, text amendment number 253, an ordinance to amend the Laurel Unified Land Development Code, Chapter 20, Land Development and Subdivision, Article 1, zoning, Division 5, zoning district, Section 20 dash 1 dot 7, Section 20 dash 6 dot 1 3, Section 20 dash 7 dot 8 of the city code to allow for tourist homes and providing an effective date. Mr. Love?
Good evening once again. The proposed text amendment is to allow tourist homes as an accessory use within single-family dwellings, one-family detached dwellings within the following zoning districts, R5, R55, R20, RT, R30, R18, R10, RMD, CN, CC, CG, and CV zones. A tourist home would be defined as a single-family dwelling, one-family detached, where overnight lodging is provided for one or more paying visitors with a maximum of eight paying visitors at one time for no more than 30 consecutive days. The tourist home use is accessory to the principal use as a main dwelling. Some of the conditions we would have with this would be must be, it must be located within a single-family dwelling, one-family detached, that is, the permanent residence of the owner. All tourist homes must obtain a tourist home license for this use, which must be applied for by the owner of the property. Prior to the issuance of this license, the premises must be inspected by the Office of the Fire Marshal and Permanent Services and approved, subject to any conditions deemed appropriate by the Fire Marshal or designee prior to the first night of occupancy for this use and every three years thereafter. Their tourist home license will expire annually on July 1st, at which time the applicant has 30 days to renew the license. One all-street parking space shall be provided for every four paying visitors staying at one time. The City of Laurel will maintain a database for all tourist home licenses, which will include but not limited to the property owner's name, phone number, and email address, as well as the name, phone number, and email address of his designated emergency contact. We worked very closely with the Fire Marshal's office and also took a lot off the Prince George County's home stay or tourist home legislation. And this was also, was really to be put together so that was something that was enforceable for the city. Currently, the code does not allow for tourist homes. Staff wishes to create this use within these zoning districts in order to also bring them in line with other jurisdictions.
Hello? Mayor Mo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to mention, we had several discussions over this at the administration level. I do want to make sure everyone understands this is entirely different from the bed and breakfast that we already regulate. The tourist homes, we're already seeing some issues around the city that we're trying to address. The other point is, or the other piece of this is that you'll note that we kept it in single-family dwelling units detached. I did not feel that it needed to be in townhomes or apartments or, well, in townhomes and other places, that the single-family home detached dwelling was the best way to proceed with that. So you may want to have some discussion on that, but that's what we ended up coming up with. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, we'll open the floor for comments and discussion. We'll start with Councilman Liz.
Yeah, let me, trying to get my arms around this. You talk about four people, correct, Robert? How does that jive with up to four people not related to each other staying in a dwelling unit?
When, when it concerns with this, we're, we're not as concerned with, as if it's their four unrelated or related on this. That's why we put the maximum of eight total people.
Somewhere in our ordinance talks about four, four related people. Is that correct, Christian? So how does this jive with that? You could have five now that are not related.
For short-term stay, yeah.
Okay. I'll throw that over the wall and let you deal with that. That, it doesn't jive. Mayor, I don't know, but it just doesn't jive when I look at part of the ordinance talks about four unrelated people. Now, let me just ask one other question. So you could have four unrelated people staying in this unit, coming in four different cars, correct?
Well, if you have, you have to have the adequate, adequate parking for that.
You're talking about one parking space.
You have to one, one all-street space provided for every four people coming.
But you can have four different people coming in four different cars. That's the point I'm making. We got a parking problem right now in the City of Laurel. I mean, we see, I, I know that, that Mr. Sidnor and Ms. Nicholas met with the property owner because they're concerned about parking and we've got other streets where they're, I'm just trying to, in my mind, trying to get my arms around that. We've got a parking problem now. Ms. Nicholas came to my house the other night, could not park in front of my house. There was no parking spaces on Prince George Street, correct, Valerie?
Yes, that's correct.
We've got a parking problem. If we're going to allow four people to come, unrelated, four different cars, and only require one parking space, I think we've got a potential problem here. But I'll just throw that over the wall and let you mull that over, okay? Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Liz. Councilman DeWolff, comments, questions?
Just, I guess, a concern. We're adopting this to regulate these tourist homes, which is basically Airbnb's, correct?
That's one, that's one company that provides it, yes.
Yeah. That's the only thing I've ever heard them called, but, so instead of just not allowing them in the City of Laurel, we're going to allow them to come in under these regulations and isn't that going to put, I mean, we have a bed and breakfast in Laurel. We have, we have motels around the area. If we're trying to attract other, other motels, things like that, wouldn't it just be better to ban any sort of tourist homes or Airbnbs and let the people that we have that are, that with the bed and breakfast in the motels and stuff like that flourish in our city instead of having these pop up all around the city where people could stay instead?
This, this legislation is going kind of nationwide right now. Washington DC, Prince George's County, Montgomery County, Gaithersburg. Washington DC, Prince George's County, Montgomery County, Gaithersburg is currently working on it. They haven't, haven't seen the same problems with lessening at the hotels or anything to that effect. I just think this is, this is something that's changing with the times. It's much like when they had the, when Uber and Lyft were, came in compared to Taxi Gas and so forth.
I mean, we started putting these up, allowing these to come up, and they start popping up all over the city. Look at the strain it's going to put on our personnel as far as the inspections, the constant inspections and everything like that. The complaints that they get, one for parking, which is, which is really, really bad. And the rest of the things, the noise, anything like that for the police services, our whole, our whole, our whole city is going to be taxed with all these different services based on allowing this to occur.
We, one of the big aspects of this also was to bring in compliance. Now, there already are some that exist in the city. You know, just looking online, you can, you can find them already. I think I saw, what was it, eight on Airbnb, six on HomeAway and six on VRBO already that exists within the city. So this is, one aspect is also to bring those into compliance with this. And then I've worked very closely with the Fire Marshal's office. We went over many different waves of how to put this together. They did not think it would be too taxing for them to enforce this. This was something that was enforceable, and I think that was the issue with. And I've enforced these at a different jurisdiction, and you have to form in a way that you'll be able to actually, you know, enforce what, what exists out there. A lot of these, they'll put in the law, and there's not enough people to go out there to, not enough inspectors. But working with the Fire Marshal, they said this was exactly the type of thing. They're kind of rolling it together with the same timeline as they have with their rental licenses, so that's easier for them, that they can do that each year. So as far as that goes, I think that's another key aspect is bringing everything into compliance with that. I'm not seeing, like I said, nationwide, too much of an issue between the hotels and the bees and the, and then. I think when you go to the bed and breakfast, you're looking for a different kind of experience than you would if you were going to one of these Airbnbs. This, you're just renting the place. Bed and breakfast, you're getting meals, there's a lot more to it.
No, they're going to get breakfast. That's all they get. I just think it's going to, I think it's going to tax our services, it's going to create parking problems, and it's going to put a, I mean, I personally know the people that worked on that house and preserved that house on Montgomery Street, and they put a ton of money into it just to create something with the ambiance and atmosphere that's absolutely fit for Old Town Laurel. And now we're going to let these little, little things pop up. And you said they're already popping up. Why don't we just make them illegal and then you don't have any issues to deal with, other than shutting them down? That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman DeWalt. Councilman Sidnor?
Thank you, Mr. President. My question is almost similar to Councilman Lees. I was trying to understand it on page three or page two, number eight on page three, that one off-street parking space. I was trying to imagine that because you got single-family houses, there's no designated parking. It's like you just park on the street first come, first served. So I was trying to grasp this. How would that, how would that go into place? How would you have a designated spot for a person staying there?
If they, if they can't provide that spot, then they can't have this use.
Our mayor would say, I didn't hear you. I apologize. You just.
Okay.
Correct. I just, for those, sorry, I didn't have my mic. You basically have to have a driveway for designated.
Right, okay. So I was trying to figure that out. Okay, it makes sense now. So they don't have a driveway, have a vehicle, and they, they can't use it. I got it. Yeah, because I was trying to figure that out. I was like, okay, thank you so much for the clarity. Thank you for the clarity. That's all I have.
Councilwoman Nicholas?
So can you tell me about what type of fines will be imposed?
Right now, we're looking, they get, they would get 15 days to correct it, depending on, unless it was an emergency condition. The fines right now, and I'll bring them up to it, are going to be roughly, it's, what, $75? It's going to be tied to us, it's going to be initial of, I believe it's 70, oh, right here, sorry about that, $75 for the initial violation and $200 for any repeat violations. And that's through 20-3.1 of the ordinance.
And if you find that they exceed, let's say you get the first one and then a repeat, what happens after that if they continue to violate? What happens?
It's just going to be, it's going to, it's going to keep, it's going to continue to escalate then.
Will it ever be at any point they'll lose their license? It'll just be money imposed?
We'll be able to, we'll be able to pull the license for them, have that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
As Mr. Love has mentioned, for some time, there've been these pop-up tourist homes around the city. I know a couple I've heard about that have caused some issues and concerns. This, this ordinance is an effort to regulate and therefore shut down or, or at least put conditions on anyone who wants to open, like we were talking about. I agree with Councilman Lees, Councilman Sidnor regarding the parking. We all know that there's a parking issue and concern citywide. So making sure that anyone who, anyone who would, I guess you'd call it rent, space in one of these tourist homes, that the tourist home has adequate on-site, on-property parking. And I think it just says one on-street, does it? Councilman Lees?
Off-street.
Off-street, I'm sorry, I meant off-street. Okay. So a driveway, as the mayor mentioned, would be a qualifier. It would be, as I understand it, something that is required. And without a driveway, then an application would be denied for permit.
Mm-hmm, right.
So that would in some manner deal. Now, I would presume also that the responsibility of monitoring that, and I would hope in some manner it be made clear if this moves forward with the owner of the property, that it's their responsibility to ensure that off-street parking for any guests in their home or what they use.
Correct. That's what they'll have to monitor, and then any complaints will be, as they are now, complaint-based.
I, I like the idea as Councilwoman Nicholas, I think, was getting to is that after so many offenses, the city, perhaps should be something in here that says after X number of offenses, it's shut down and the permit's lost, so that any applicant, anyone who wants to have a permit to operate a tourist home knows that violation that reaches a maximum number, their operation is, is no longer allowed.
Mr. President, it's actually, it is mentioned at the end, at the end of, and within there, it says, "Failure to correct the violation within 30 days may result in a revocation of the tourist home license."
Okay.
Yes, Mayor. Robert, just a couple of things, because I think, you know, when we get into this sometimes, it's hard to follow, and maybe there's people at home as well.
Yeah.
I think it's important that we, we point out that this is an accessory use. So you can't go buy a house and run a tourist home out. You have to be living in that facility, not a renter. You have to be living in that facility as a homeowner and want to rent out a room. What I was going to ask, if, just hearing some of the concerns, we should probably be looking at the numbers on, on the number of visitors. The other question I had, Larry, for you, is can the council, can the council do a citywide number of permits? Say we'll do up to 10 permits a year for tourist homes? The first 10 that come into the city, first 12, you know, that do that?
We actually, in another jurisdiction I worked in, they did that. Actually, I don't know, it was different state, but they actually did. They, I think they imposed like 20 or something, or 25 per, or something to that effect.
You were a cheaper answer than Larry, but Larry, no.
I was, I was actually just going to say that, I think if it's a reasonable number, I think you have to look at that issue also. That as long as you have a reasonable number, I think that would be defensible.
Okay. Mr. President, you know, if we have some, we have some time here. We do have some issues. If we want to outlaw them altogether, then we should, you know, move in that direction and let us know if you like the idea. And again, I think there are opportunities for this type of accessory use, so long as it's not, so long as it's not, you know, overdone in one street where there's, you know, you know, five or six different tourist homes. But I do think, you know, again, we have our local scenery around town, we have our local museum, there's things like that where they can build things into and work on different programs. And I do think we will get some revenue off of this as well. When they pay the individual, they have to pay their state and, I guess, just the state side of it, which will come down from the comptroller's office. I, you know, I don't know what that is, whether you're even interested in that or not, but, you know, I've, I've heard where it's too many, so maybe we want to look at that. We're concerned about the parking, so that's, you know, maybe where it's, you can only have one on, you know, one within a, one street, you know, I don't know. It's just something I think we can get creative with since, you know, we have our own planning and zoning authority here and still, still, I think, meet the needs of some. I think there is, you know, there is an opportunity for people that are trying to make some other income, be able to do this as well through this Airbnb, as you heard. But if it's a, you know, if we don't want to move in that, you want to outlaw it, then, you know, we just need to know so we can move forward. But those are just a couple ideas that I wanted to throw out that people may be interested in.
So Mayor, if I heard you, and Council jump in at any time, you just said that there is time, so if we want to examine this a little further and get back to the administration.
Yeah, let me just ask, Christian, we're okay on that. You wanted to do something to the, because these will require a court reporter and everything else, right? Yeah. So are you okay coming back?
I'm fine with that, whatever the council desires.
I, I have one follow-up question, Robert, and that is, while this is for a dwelling unit, does that exclude any ancillary building on the property that a property owner may want to convert into some type of a short-stay use?
Yes.
It does?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Mr. President, I don't know if we can answer this question tonight or not, but someone is using it, right? That's, let's say that we approve this ordinance, and someone just have a house and they started using it without going through the city, I could enforce that. How would we know?
It's, it's like we have any other complaints, it's going to be, it's just going to be a complaint. Like if someone calls in and notices, that's how we've noticed some of the other ones, it's got some complaints.
There's also dating cases that are showing up.
Yeah.
Okay.
They're, I think, yeah, going with that, but yeah.
So you go out, staff will go out and do an investigation, Fire Marshal will go out and do an investigation, okay? And they're fine, okay?
They do, then they shut it down. We, we've already, I know, a couple of weeks ago, we shut one down.
Mr. President, if I could, I appreciate, appreciate the comments of the mayor and Robert. One issue about the four versus the total of four, I know they'll address that. And there's ways to address the parking. But the important thing here is, and I think that everybody recognizes it, it's already being done. And it's being done without the Fire Marshal taking a look to make sure that we have life safety issues addressed. This city's always taken a leadership role in the area of life safety. So it's important that if we say we're not going to do it, people are going to do it. Okay? So I think it's something that has to be managed to make sure that Mr. Kope and the, and his fire inspection responsibilities are met as far as ingress and egress from these, you know, whether it's a bedroom or whatever it is. So I think it's important that we, I'm in favor of doing something. Just need to sort of iron, iron out these speed bumps that I've identified. I think that others and my colleagues have identified tonight.
Let me, let me propose this, I guess, with the, with the parking. So if we have one for, for paying, do you, do you want to say it must provide parking possibly for every car that's brought in has to provide an off-street parking or something?
I don't think we can do that, Robert. I just, my feeling is we, we require the one off-street parking.
Yeah.
Okay? That will dictate how much business they get. Because if you go to Airbnb, you see the comments, parking was terrible, the host was terrible, okay? So I think, and again, or Ms. Nicholas found a parking place in front of Councilman Lees' home. But I'm just saying that I think that that will address itself, more importantly, on the life safety issue and resolving the issue of four versus total of five. And I'm sure the administration will do that. That's my final comment, Mr. President.
I just want to say that you really came well-prepared.
Oh, thank you.
You've done your homework. I've known, you've really done your homework. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Counsel, here's a question. We can move forward and introduce this Monday night. We will have our typical number of public hearings and have the, have staff massage some of the comments that were made.
I'm fine with that, Mr. President, because they'll amend it as, as required, that's all.
Are we, are we good with that, Counsel? Please, if not, okay. So we'll introduce this on Monday, April 8th, 2019, at 7:00 PM. Thank you, Mr. Love.
Thank you.
Agenda item D is open-ended contract hazardous, or rather hazard mitigation support service. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, and Mr. President, and Council members. This subject came up probably about a year ago because we're intimately involved in a lot of the hazardous mitigation projects that are going on within the city, and not only that they're currently going on, but are, we're looking in the future. It's really become necessary to establish a list of companies that can provide us the expertise and the services that we need for both hazardous mitigation programs, which includes grants, grant writing, grant application processes, managing grants, our resiliency program, and related support services that have to do with emergency management. In working with the Department of Budget and Personal Services, we put a request for proposal out to establish a list of companies that would be interested, that we could have at the ready to go out to service whatever specialty we needed. We sent the proposals out through the normal methods and avenues. We received four requests back. These requests were evaluated by myself, Michelle Saylor, and the Deputy City Administrator, Luanne Crook. We entertain and we're recommending that all four of them be listed as companies that we could use. And just to give you a small flavor of the companies, they go from small Frank McCombe Consulting, which is our smallest company, to the largest, Witt and O'Brien, and that's James Lee Witt, who was the FEMA Secretary way back when, that's his company, that they're very large. Hagerty Consulting Company, they're doing a lot of work across the river in Elka City and all, and they've come with good recommendations from Harrod County Office of Emergency Management and the folks over there that's working on the Elka City matters. So this will give us a great opportunity to have a core group of companies that we can look for, as you all are well aware of, when we're looking especially for grants and grant applications, sometimes the timeframe isn't enough to allow you to go out and seek multiple companies and get, and, and look and to meet that requirement. So this will give the city a big advantage in having these vendors at the ready so we can need them for a lot of our, our projects. Also, like the community rating system that we're involved in is a specialty. Another good thing about these four companies is geez, something really brings something special to the table, like Frank McCombe. to the table. Like Frank McCombe has been involved with us with the community rating system because they've done it multiple 56 times in other communities. So they come right in with the expertise. They don't have to, they know what you want and they get in the city. And it really helps us get these projects, projects moving. I'll entertain any questions.
I'll start with, with my question. And that is, just so I understand clearly, of the four companies or whatever the number is that's cited upon, will there be a time when there's a, a project and they compete against one another, just that group? Or will there be a situation where your department or some other department in the city will just select a company to take care of a certain project?
I'll answer that with both. It'll give us the option of doing both. So if there's a, if there's a specific project that we know one of these companies are the experts and really can give us the biggest bang for the buck, and then we'll go right out. And of course, it all depends on the threshold of the funding. If it's required to meet the procurement requirements, perhaps we'll put it out to a multiple group.
Now, that multiple group, is that just a four?
Yes, sir. That's, that's just a four.
Got it. Okay. All right. Yeah, exactly. Exactly. That's just what I was thinking. The engineering, we did the same thing. Okay. Questions or comments, Councilman DeWalt?
Could you give me an example of some of the, go through just maybe about 12 of them, of the hazard, hazards that would pop up that we're going to get these companies in here to mitigate?
It's, it's ranges from doing mitigations. So mitigation, you talk about risk reduction. What can we do to reduce the risk that the city is faced with? Risk from tornadoes, flooding, hurricanes, active shooters, anything that is a risk that comes under emergency management, these companies would be able to help us out. Preparing this, you know, we do a lot in preparing this with emergency management. So emergency operation plans, emergency operation guides, working with Homeland Security and the police and looking, you know, at different ways that we can do parameters for our Main Street festivals and stuff like that. So in, in preparing this also, the preparing this part is a resiliency program that we currently have with this, that we're moving on with our faith based organizations to have the city be able to stand within its own feet for 72 hours. So that's a big part of this whole thing. The response end of it, how do we get the additional support and resources up, you know, the plans, getting with the emergency management packs and stuff that are out here? How can we best reach out if we, we don't have the resources locally? What do we need to do? And how do we set up, you know, to get these additional resources in? Our debris management program is a great example. We have a debris management program that we already have two companies ready to go. If we have an incident here for debris management, we call them, they will be, they're guaranteed to be here within 24 hours. They will take care of our whole debris, both household debris and green debris. They'll stage them in, in separate location. Then we'll have a follow on company that comes in and does all the paperwork electronically, measuring the trucks, doing everything that FEMA does. And at the end of a disaster or an incident, then all we need to do is take this prepared package, submit it to MEMA for FEMA for reimbursements. They'll do all of that for us. And the last thing there that these companies can provide is, especially in our grants, we don't have any specific grant people on staff. So in order to be in the running for this monies to help us throughout all of our phases of emergency management, we need these expertise and experts to be able to go out and get a grant. We've been very successful in the last two years. We've gotten three grants and we just put in for a fourth and a fifth one. So you need the expertise to come in. And also, Councilman DeWalt, another thing that a lot of people don't realize, I mean, you could go out and get somebody who can write grants. I mean, that's, you could teach somebody how to do that. But where you really need a person is not only a person who can write them grants, but has the expertise. So when we're talking to them about floods or we're talking to them about preparing this, they already know what that is. So when they're writing the grant, when you go to present that grant, the people reading the grant and making the evaluation says, well, these people know what they're talking about. So it's really critical for us.
Over the weekend, we just had 47,000 gallons of raw sewage spill into the Patuxent River. Why do we still have a lapse between the communication from the WSSC notifying the city every time a flood? I consider 47,000 gallons of raw sewage very, very critical in the fact even that it was the first day of trout season where a lot, a lot of people go down to that river, right in, right from the swimming pool all the way down to the bridge, and they fish. And there was a lot down there that day. Why do we still have a lapse in communication with all this technology that we have now? I mean, I remember when the, the lady that was homeless died over in Anarundel County because WSSC never notified us concerning the flooding and things like that. And I know, I hear that excuse from them all the time that we're not a flood management dam up there and everything. But that doesn't take away the responsibility of them to keep us notified when a thing like this sewage spill for 47,000. I was getting texts. I was getting phone calls. I was getting all kind of stuff from people that were, were aware of that. And why don't we get notified right away concerning things like that?
Well, I've spent the last three days on the phone with probably 10 people, starting with WSSC. WSSC being the big organization that they are, it's just bureaucrats. And when you ask them, and I flat ask them, how come you didn't notify me? They go back and they said, well, it's this division or it's that division. Then when you get to that division, they say it's this division. So I've been trying to, to get with Dave McDonough, who is the Director of their Emergency Services and Police. And I told him it was unacceptable that we did not get notified. And I can tell you that when I received a call from the mayor and from Bill asking what was going on, I went, I didn't know because they didn't notify me. So in the discussions that I've had with WSSC the last three days, the first thing I found out was they still had Marty Fleming down as a contact. Now, why'd he did? I don't know. But and, and I told him, I said, even having Marty, I said, if you'd have called him, Marty would have called us. So I tried to fix that. Another thing that I'm doing is I am preparing a written plan, a notification plan that I've been working with WSSC to make sure that on anything critical that they notify us. Now, if you read WSSC's protocol and their regulation, it says they only have to notify two people, MDE and the Prince George's County Health Department. That's it. So, and I said, well, that's kind of stupid. I said, you know, we're here, the spill here was right in the Patuxent. The only thing we knew about it is one of their people came down and nailed a sign to a tree that said raw sewage. And that's it. No notification. They didn't, they put a press release out at 11 o'clock at night. The spill started at 8:24, it ended at 4:17. And then they put a press release out at 11 o'clock at night. And I said, what was the good of that? Well, that's what we're supposed to do. Well, what you're supposed to do and what really you should do is two different things. The next thing I've been working on is who from Prince George? I wanted to find out who, when you say you notified MDE, who was it? We're still working on that. We haven't found out who it is yet. Prince George County Health, I did find out finally today with Joanne Barr sitting in my office, we finally talked to somebody in the Environmental Health of Department of Health. That's where the call is received. But I still have not been able to get any clarification on what do they do once they've received a call. Another thing that we're working on is, that's one part of this, the notification. The second part is, who gives the all clear? I haven't been able to find out that yet. The, the Health Department haven't told me. I'm hoping with the lady that who's the Director tomorrow of Environmental Health will be able to fill me in on what goes on where. But to make a long story short, Councilman, I'm in the process of having that in writing. And then we will be meeting with WSSC. And if we have to, I'll get with the mayor and the city administrator, and we'll go over there and meet with the Director of WSSC. But there, you know, and I don't mean to point fingers or anything, but they're very callous. They meet the minimums, but that's it. But the minimums to us in the city here is, is, to me, is not right. So, but I'm, I'm, I'm working on it.
Thanks. It's very insulting. It really is. Especially when I, I find out and then you tell me everybody didn't know about it. That's very insulting because that section from the pool all the way down to that, down to that bridge is, is the city of Laurel. And it's, it's a very critical area that if there is, this is the second one we've had. Remember the, what, two years ago, we had, but that was on the Harrod County side, but it still spilled into the Patuxent River. And it's, you know, we just don't get notification. And we had a woman die because of it. And that's very sad.
It is.
My, my constituents would, will gladly appreciate it if you get that worked out. They really would.
And so will I, Councilman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman DeWalt. Councilman Sidnor, comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. My question's kind of redundant though, but I want to ask it anyway, for more clarity for myself as well. On the bottom paragraph on the first page of your memo, he said that the Office of Budget, Department of Budget Personnel Service received four packages. And the four packages was forwarded to the selection committee. And the selection committee evaluated and scored these packages. And so all four of these individuals are qualified to any emergency hazmat in the city.
Well, yes, but no. They all bring a separate distinct piece.
Okay.
And it all depends on the scope. If it's a big project, and then it's something that we might not go with, with the small firm, something with Widow O'Brien. That's why we wanted a least, and we were lucky to get a range of small, medium, and large with a wide variety of services. So we have more of options.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilwoman Nicholas?
You've already answered my question. Thank you.
Councilman Les?
Yeah, let me just, Steve, let me just sort of answer Mr. DeWalt a bit. The requirement for notification spelled, spelled out in the, I believe it's COMAR.
Correct.
Correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the fact is that the breakdown is in the county. They're not doing their job. We have met with Ben, the Secretary. I've got a subcommittee that meets with him regularly on this issue. And so maybe Mr. DeWalt might want to call Mr. Denoga and ask him, why isn't the county doing their job? Okay. The fact is, the river was posted, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. WSSC is required under the COMAR to notify certain people. And that doesn't matter whether it comes from filtration plant or it comes from the Western Branch or what sewage treatment facility it comes from. We've got a problem. We understand the problem. The issue is the breakdown does not occur at WSSC. It occurred this time in the county. All right. And again, let me just reiterate what I said. Patuxent River Commission has a subcommittee who has met with Ben and his staff, the Secretary Ben, and his staff several times on this issue, were trying to resolve the issue. The problem has to do with it spelled out in the COMAR, what the process is. As to when they remove the signs, it's, could be 30 days, or it could be less, depending where you are on the river. Okay. They're worried not just about the raw sewage, but the E. coli. So again, I, we need to be careful. WSSC has done a fairly good job in complying with what they're required to comply with. The breakdown is elsewhere along the river. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Les. So Council, are we prepared to move forward?
I have another comment.
Okay.
What is it so hard that when those were WSSC people up on that job site, what is it so hard for them to pick up a phone and call the city of Laurel? I don't care whose fault it is or where it goes back to or what policy. This has been going on for a long, long, long time. And to not have the communications with what we have now, with everybody having at least a cell phone in their pocket at all times, you mean, you can't get the communications corrected on notifying of 47,000 gallons of raw sewage from that person to us? It's, it's just unacceptable. I don't care whose fault it is. All it needs to be is corrected. We, we have all this technology now. How can you not notify the city of Laurel when anything happens in those areas like that? It's just, it's just mind boggling to me. Just totally mind boggling to me. And I don't care whose fault it is. It just needs to get done so that people will know when there's an actual emergency along our river, riverbanks. And, and somebody doesn't die like they died when that lady died.
Mayor Mo?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. First, we've talked about this internally. You heard some of what Steve has said tonight. We've had a pretty good relationship with all of our partners, whether it's the county or with WSSC. And sometimes we need to reinforce some things. We talked today regarding another issue that we're having some concerns about on notification. And I've asked Sarah to set up a meeting with the General Manager of WSSC to meet with her, to discuss some issues that we are having, some notification and other such things. The, the point here is that there was a failure in the notification system. We will find out what the issue is. We will find out where it broke down and we will make sure that it doesn't break down again. And sometimes people need to be reminded of that. And I think it's important for Council to understand that we are working hard, as you heard Steve say, he's been on the phone most of the day. We've talked about it with some other issues that we're dealing with. So we'll, we'll keep everybody posted and make sure everybody's aware of what we're able to find out and how we're able to correct it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. So we, we are good, Council, and having this scheduled on our agenda for Monday, April 8th?
I'm okay with it, Mr. President.
Agenda item E is Resolution Number 5-19, a resolution to the Marion City Council of Laurel, Maryland, for the purpose of establishing a volunteer code of conduct for all city of Laurel volunteers. Mayor Mo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Really, the meat of this is the attachment. If you'll see, if you scroll down, you'll see the resolution and then the city of Laurel Code of Conduct. What has brought this about is when we do resolution, when we do the establishment of CACs or Citizens Advisory Committees, our commissions and other things, once we appoint and it's confirmed by the Council, except for issues of two consecutive in a 12 month period, we can't really remove anybody from a commission, committee, or elsewise. This tries to establish a code of conduct that we expect from our volunteers. And again, this is, we'd ask for, you know, input. This has been tossed around for a while. One committee, one of our commissions in particular is having some real issues. And there's just really no way for me as the mayor to go in and to be able to take action in some cases. So we've tried to put this together. We've modeled this after several others that we've seen throughout the state, nothing in particular, you know, not every word. And that's really what it's, what this is all about. Plus, as we do new, as we establish new committees or commissions, we need to probably make sure that this, you know, that there's language in there that someone can be removed for conduct. So that's what we're trying to do here, Mr. President. So that's what we're trying to do here, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Les? Councilman DeWalt? Councilman Sidnor?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Nicholas?
I like it. Yeah.
Excellent. Mayor?
So the only thing, Larry, that we'll have to talk about is if somebody decides not to sign it. So there, we may see that. And I think, I, my thinking is just to let the Council know, once this is adopted, and maybe that should be put in there as, as we reappoint people, we do that then, instead of trying to go back to every committee or commission to try to have them sign off on this. But we ask the chairs maybe to do a voluntary type thing. You know, just things were kicking around, so. I don't know if anybody has any thoughts or suggestions on it.
Let me just ask a quick one. All of our volunteers have to submit financial disclosures. Only certain, certain committees.
Really, it's the committees.
Okay. I, I was just thinking about that tied into this.
Remember, if you remember, at one time, they did do that for all of the committees, and there were people who resigned from that. So.
And that's why I was wondering.
So I wanted to point this out, and I don't know, Larry, whether we should try to, maybe in the resolution, say that it shall be effective as long as the Council agrees at the time of reappointment or appoint, you know, something to that effect.
Mr. Mayor, we can think about, about when it's effective, but I, I would think that, you know, if anybody's going to be appointed, these are voluntary positions. They take this subject to signing the particular document. I mean, if they choose not to, that's fine. But then the city certainly has the right to say that you can't serve our commission. We don't want you on our commission if you're not signing the appropriate document.
Okay.
Mr. President, so Larry, so what we would say is the letter of appointment would say, subject to signing the, this, this agreement, correct?
Yes. My, my issue's not with, mine's with current volunteer committee members now.
Let me think on that a little bit, just see how we sort of transition into that.
I don't know whether the Council has any thoughts on that. I mean, in some cases, we have issues trying to find some people, so I don't, you know. But, but I also think there needs to be some guidance there, and it needs to be upfront in this day and age.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor.
Currently, as a volunteer coordinator at the hospital, I would think that if someone doesn't want to sign it, then they would not be accepted as a volunteer. Because there are a set of requirements going through a background check and the shop requirements and things. So I would think that, you know, if they don't want to sign it, then that would be grounds to say, you know, we can't bring you in, because there has to be some form of accountability.
Right.
That's just my opinion.
Absolutely.
Council, if there's no other business?
I have one more thing to bring up.
Councilman DeWalt?
Tomorrow, I believe I got this right, is Reverend Warren Litchfield's 90th birthday. He, he says, he says nine decades, so I thought that would be very, very appropriate for him. I, I would like to get a, some sort of, maybe at the next council meeting on Monday, get him some sort of sheet cake from Cakes Plus or something like that.
We've, we've talked about it.
Oh, it is? Okay, good enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think we should get like 90, nine decades on there. I think that would be very, very nice if we could put that on. Oh, really? You can, you could get those sugar-free cakes. Yeah, they got them.
Okay. That concludes our meeting. Thank you.